Order strategic planning for Tuesday, May 3, 2022. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. It is 6:35, so we called to order and took our tour of the rec center. And specifically to take a look at the existing swimming pool, the facilities over there. And then we're re- we adjourned there, came back, and here we are to finish up strategic planning. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous committee meeting held Tuesday, April 5. Can I get a second, please? Seconded by, I don't know, oh, yep, Alderman Dennis, all in favor? I opposed, okay, motion carried, no one finished business. But we do have a new referral, and this is just having that follow-up discussion on the splash park. So a couple of weeks ago, the council kind of moved forward with the initiative to replace the swimming pool. And within that footprint, to install a modern splash park. And the mayor and alderman Anastasia asked us to just revisit, to get some numbers on what, and some different options, whether or not to keep the swimming pool. And so I wanted everyone to get a chance to take a look at the facility, take a look at the existing swimming pool, and the pumps, et cetera. And so before we get into any of the numbers, are there any questions at this point in time?
I guess something I'd like to ask, John, if we were, if we did reuse that pool and we looked at, do we try to make use of the equipment that's in there, or it all gets replaced?
No, all of that, so within the price that we'll see here, all of that is going to be brand-new equipment for the splash park. Okay, so it's going to just, where we save is the eliminate an additional structure outside to house the pool pumps or the splash park pumps. We can use the existing pool room, pump room, but all of that 50-year-old equipment will be gone, and we'll have brand-new equipment to run the splash park. Okay, so any other questions? So Jason Havens from Clark Patterson Lee put together some numbers for us. So the base price of the splash pad equipment itself, again, this is pretty good estimates, but, so the equipment itself would be $750,000. To remove the existing pool and to use that footprint, installation, pumps, new concrete, right? All-new equipment, splash park equipment, is around $1.3 million. So that comes under and gives us some wiggle room there, the $1.5 million that we have allocated for the project. Of course, there are some different options that we've discussed and talked about, shade structures, lounges, things that we could do to spruce up, and really music, you know, outdoor music, speaker system, et cetera. So there is some additional wiggle room within that footprint. Now, option one would be to keep the existing pool structure as is, and just as kind of our original scope, not really understanding the shape of the pool, to just put the splash park in front of the pool, closer to East State Street, and keep the existing pool there. So that would tack on $130,000, primarily in, if you took, well, we were over there, if you saw the grade of the layout, the land in front of the pool is much lower than the pool height, so they would have to bring in fill and, as well as build a small outdoor facility there to house the splash park pumps. If you, hopefully you noticed, the cement around the pool is in really rough shape. And so to, I asked them to provide option two, keep the existing pool, provide new cement, all right, for the outdoor pool, as well as keep, move the splash park, right, in front there. That would cost an extra $285,000 for $1.595 million. Option three, which would be, to be perfectly honest, I mean, if this is something the council wanted to go and felt that there was value in keeping the pool, we saw the pumps, you know, if you're going to do it and you're going to put in new cement, you would probably behoove to replace all the infrastructure, as well as the pumps. And so that would bring the total project cost up to $1.859 million, or about over, over a half a million dollars more on the project. Just one thing to note that the engineers put together was roughly about $50,000, $60,000 worth of annual cost in the operation of the pool, between labor, they had labor, chemicals, and two-fold fills of the pool water. So give or take, I think we assumed it was around $35,000, $40,000 worth of lifeguards that we need, et cetera. We could bounce that down to attendance if we did away with the pools. And there would be some potential savings on chemicals compared to other facilities. So as far as relevant costs go, that's the, $60,000 is about the annual cost to operate the pool. And then you've got your, your different choices here. I know what I feel, but I'm open to certainly any, any questions or comments.
Did Chris say, or are you, as far as one renovation, is that small, is it redone or something?
Yes.
Totally redone?
Yeah, it's sort of, because it'd look worse than the bigger pool.
There was, there was missing some tiles.
Well, and it sits idle for two and a half years now.
Now, now with that being said, Jason, the pumps for the main, I don't believe those are new pumps, new filters and pumps for the, for the child pool, just the external structure, yeah.
So one of the things that somebody had said is, you know, not having the pool would encourage kids to kind of go swimming in swimming holes and stuff. And since the pool hasn't been up and running in two and a half years, I guess the question is, I don't think we've run into or seen issues where kids have run into problems in swimming holes or finding themselves in creeks and stuff that were unsafe, that we've at least heard of, right?
What is this, like, Stand By Me, like, nobody's going and swimming in swimming holes anymore? Everybody's got their phones and their bikes and their e-scooters, like, what planet are these people living on? If they were doing that in 2022?
Well, and I was saying, where are they going?
I don't mean, not talking to you either, I just like-
No, no, I was saying, where did they go during that time?
They go to their friend's hospital.
They go like here.
Yeah.
And that was a question, you know? If we haven't heard that that's been an issue-
Right.
I don't know if it'll be an issue if it hasn't been in the past two and a half years.
Okay.
Well, we've been, I'll say, yes, there has been kids in the river.
Okay.
Okay, there has been kids in Forest Pond, and the police have gone, have gone over and shagged them out. Forest Pond, not really, because it's with the river, where it's unsafe, yeah. But, you know, my understanding is that the pool way back when was built because they had a couple of drownings in the river, and they wanted to give kids a safe place to swim.
So are there other times, though, that kids have been in the, in the, in the river?
Oh, yeah.
Right, so it's probably an ongoing issue, not just if we have the pool open or not?
Right, yeah, kids want to go in the river, they go in the river. I loved playing in that river when I was a kid.
They go out onto ice, they fall through.
Oh, yeah, I fell through a couple of times.
Human nature.
I learned a lot.
Well, I was just trying to address if there's other issues that people came up with, right? So that we could say, you know, here's where maybe something was a valid issue or something didn't seem to be even without the pool.
So, you know, I think that's a valid point. I've still, I've yet to hear, you know, any, anybody call me, any emails. I've got to believe that there is a reason why every other community in America is going this direction, and that's replacing municipal pools, just because of their expensive upkeep. Now, I understand we put some money into it years, years ago, but that, at this point, is a sunk cost, right? It's money that was spent, but we have an opportunity to become more efficient, to lower our operating costs, lower our insurance premiums, and have a brand-new, you know, $1.5 million facility that is in high demand today. And, you know, I was the biggest proponent, I wanted to see, I thought adding a splash park would help to revitalize the life to the pool. But looking at the shape it's in, I see one of two options. And it's, it's none of the options in the middle. It's either, you know, I wouldn't put a $1.5 million splash park next to that existing pool structure, okay? So if we go uptown and see some of the sidewalk that has been replaced, patchwork against the old sidewalk, I mean, you're not going to, you don't want to do that. So that means we would be signing up for $1.9 million. If we're going to do it, then we would have to do it right, all-new pumps, all-new cement work, and infrastructure, and have a brand-new facility that's good for the next 20, 30 years.
Because otherwise, we'd end up, you know, maybe it's 10 years, but-
Right.
That pool needs to be shut down, and there's this shutdown pool next to-
Right.
A splash park, and that, that would just ruin the whole thing.
Yep, and I told, when we were over there, I was telling John and the others at NiCom, the biggest thing was doing away with community pools because of the liability. We already had to get rid of our diving board because of liability. And I just think this is the way communities are going, it's safer. And I think it might even attract more kids. I mean, anytime in the summer, before the last two years were COVID, you know, driving by there, there were just a handful of kids there. And we were paying people, we were paying the upkeep, we're paying lifeguards, we're paying the maintenance. You know, it feasibly, it didn't, to me, make sense, so.
You know, the, a couple of people have called me too, and they've, they wanted to keep the pool. But if I were to go back, you know, when that diving board finally came out and stuff, I think I was a teenager. Those kind of things are what stopped me from going there. I mean, as a teenager, the diving board was the only thing that made it fun enough for a teenager to go. And then that came out, so that's where, that's where my care for the pool ended, you know?
Yeah, but it came out because the city was sued.
Yeah, I understand that, I, I, I think, you know, I don't know what can be done about that. So I think it's too bad that people take things out, because-
Am I reading this right, if anything, or Jason put, if we want with option three, we're talking now, you're going to need to find an additional $359,000 to keep the pool and the splash pad?
Well, isn't it $549,000?
Well, we've set aside 1.5 at today's point.
Oh, got you.
Right, so we've allocated $1.5 million, so it would be an extra $359,000, right, to the capital project, and then we're still on the hook for $60,000 in annual operating costs, yes.
I just, I just think that, you know, if we, I mean, the pool's something, and splash pads, I'm, I'm never going to use. But I'm just thinking of all the people that have called me, and from around the city, and I didn't keep logs of who they are.
Yeah.
But it seems like the rest, some of the residents want to keep the pool, maybe it's nostalgic reasons, who knows? But, but, I mean, that would be a state-of-the-art facility if we had a functioning pool, and we had the splash park to add to the elegance of the pool. Can't we charge two separate fees, one for the splash pad, one for the pool, if somebody wants to use both? And, I mean, I just think it'd be a great asset for the city to keep and maintain both, just-
It doesn't solve the lifeguard problem, though, and that's something that we can't ignore, the fact that we can't staff both of these. And to be quite honest, if, if we're thinking about, like, we struggled, what was it, pre-COVID, right? Wasn't, we, we could only keep one of the pools open at any given time. And, I mean, I, I know I'm Ward 3, and this is in my ward, I'm not trying to, like, sound Ward 3, overly Ward 3 biased, but I'm going to defer to the Franchot pool over this one at any day, because that, that place is teeming with families and kids, you know, on a good day, a weekend day. And I've never seen the other pool like that, so.
Right, I mean, that, that facility resembles, this is a, this, we're talking about a bigger version of Franchot, basically, that more people could use. And I'm, I stand by, I'm afraid that if we, if we were to salvage what's there, it's not, the life of it's not, it's not going to line up with what, what's new, and it could be a problem for it. So if we wanted a pool, I mean, my, you know, we can justify it, would be to build a new one, a different size or something, with the perk, but I just, I don't feel that's where we're going.
I know a lot of you guys, I, I agree with all of you, you know, including Dave, you know, but the fact is, you know, when, I've said since the beginning, when, when John first mentioned this, I was on board with the splash park for Olean, because I feel like it's something that would change this region. And I, and I mean, the entire region. But I had never, I already admitted that I hadn't been to that place since my kids were little, maybe once or twice. Even driving up, even seeing the building, you know the building is nice, but you know the pool area, just seeing the fence isn't even aluminum anymore, it's rusted. That just goes to show that it's been sitting for a while. And then once we get inside and we start walking around, before we get to the pump house, you start seeing signs for corrosion symbol. I saw a three, and I remember seeing an eight. So you're thinking about that, and then we walk into that room, and then you can see, even though there's fresh paint on the walls, when you look at the, the dynamics of the ceiling, everything is corroded. That place is not going to last much longer. The conduit was corroded, some of the pipe up there was corroded and covered with either fresh paint or plastic covering. You can see the, the new PVC versus the old PVC. Yes, it's PVC, but the old stuff, eventually, you put the new against the old, and the old is going to go. It's as simple as that. Even if we decided to keep a pool, like you said, the nostalgia in it, to try to keep or hold on to something for the sake of, the pool has already shown that it wasn't doing anything pre-COVID. And now we're going to try to hold on to something, just holding on to that last little bit, because, why? We, because you can't get lifeguards, no one wants to do it. I, it'll be a lot easier to get employees or students to come in and work part-time to work at something like this for whatever wages, because you don't have any other qualification that you have to fill. But, but when it comes to a lifeguard, now you have something where you have to have training, you have to have hours put into that, then you have to come in and do your work and, and work this schedule. That is the reason why we can't get anyone there. Whether we do a pool or not, either way, I would love to see this splash pad come in. But for me personally, I don't think it's worth it to pay the extra money just to hold on to a pool. We still have a pool here at Olean.
You know, I, I think, I think everyone's points are well taken, and Dave, I, I, I mean, for an extra $359,000 to the project to get all-new infrastructure, I mean, I, I'm almost sold on that. If it wasn't for, is it a loss of operating costs? Is that, is it, is it a loss to operate that pool facility where at most you're getting eight weeks out of the summer to use that pool? Because it's either going to be too cloudy or too cold with our weather. Now, with that being said, with a splash park, this weekend, you know, if it's Saturday, it's going to be 80 degrees, all you got to do is flip on a switch. The water doesn't have to heat up, right? I mean, that, you, you don't have to, you know, with, with lifeguards, you, you either have to employ them, I would imagine. What happens on days that are, it's cloudy? I, I just, I think, cost-effectively, you go the route of just saying goodbye to the pool, and, and you go with the splash park. And then when you have a stretch of five nice days or four nice days, you can flip that baby on, get it up and running, everybody shows up, and then it gets cloudy and cold for two days and three days, and then you can turn it off, you don't have to keep running it. I just, I think, you brought up the challenges with the lifeguards, I wrote that down. I, I think working smarter is, is the reason why so much of America is going this direction. In fact, when I was researching this, there has not been one new municipal pool built in New York State since, in like 20 years, it's some ridiculous number. So, and there are options out there, right? We know the YMCA takes anybody, any little kid, anybody who wants to, to join there, you know, they'll give them discounted memberships or whatever, there's pools there, there's, any kid that goes to school. My daughter's doing swimming and gets exposure to swimming pool at, at Olean, at Olean. So I guess I'm still in favor of just being fiscally responsible and going the direction of just using that, that existing space.
You know, can I just say, in my ward, I haven't had one person call me, text me, say anything to me about it. And I have a lot of young families that moved in, and I would have thought one of them would have said something. The other thing that John just touched on, it's like our municipality runs a lot of our youth programs by the calendar year, the school year. And with this, we could go far into the fall, you know how warm it stays? So it takes battling, it takes the relying on not only hiring, you know, lifeguards, but having them show up, you know, young people aren't, and I hate to say this, aren't the most dependable. So I think that, to me, factors in my decision. But I think cost-wise, I think liability-wise, I would love to have both, but I just think, I think Jason pointed out a good thing. Even if you were to put some money into that pool, you either have to totally put a brand-new one in. But again, you're, you're talking about the expense of upkeep, the, the staff, the maintenance, the chemicals, and then closing it down. And remember, you know, the whole thing that I was told from a previous engineer, they always kind of held their breath because of the pressure from the river and that combined space of the pool. And nobody really talks about that, but that was real. So I just think safety, liability, cost, I would, you know, would go with our just replacement and putting the splash pad in. And I think people nowadays, kids don't even go outside half the time when it's 90 degrees. They want to stay in the air-conditioning and look at the TV and play their games. Lots of kids have pools in their backyard. Even if you go up, and I've been up to the Bartlett where there's been three kids in the pool, you know? So kids just aren't into that as much. But I think a splash pad, they will be, and I think it's something different. I think it's something that adds to people coming to Olean. And, you know, that's where I'm coming from, from my ward.
Yeah, and I think there's enough, there's enough options out there where if people really want pool, they have places they can go. It may be different, it may not be the outside venue, but, you know, you know, not everybody maybe can have a membership at Bartlett, but there's pools and there's, I know they can still go swim in. I mean, the lifeguard thing, I don't ever see that getting better, because first of all, it's always young kids that do it. Young kids don't do something that they can't be glued to their phone to do. So, I mean, that's probably a big chunk of the problem there, because-
I'm glad you brought that up, because when I was over there, I asked Chris Shuery about that, and, and we rely on high school kids to be lifeguards, so that means they've got two months, right? That limits the amount of time we can use the pool, right? They're, they're on summer break for two months. And then they go, they're in school until, what, late June, and then they're, they go back, you know, first thing, back in September. So to get, to get use out of that expanded season, where we can have nice weather by Memorial Day and into late September, I think we just need to be more strategic about it.
Another question I have too, is, like, I'm not against either project, whether it be pool or splash pads. Are our splash pads, now, I don't know, because I don't have the kids, but are splash pads guaranteed for maybe an age group of two to 10? And wouldn't the, wouldn't-
We got to get you to a splash park.
Wouldn't a 13-year-old be embarrassed to go under a splash pad?
Dude, dude!
I don't, I'm embarrassed.
Dave is going to take you-
We got to get you on vacation, brother.
It's not your mother's splash pad.
It was going to have neon lights, I know, but.
I mean, well-
But I guess he'll say this, don't cut your nose off to spite your face, but it's like, if we, you're in the pool, I mean, it's like down, two years down the road, we might be kicking ourselves in the ass, oh, we should have kept that pool, because splash pads not making that much money, and so.
So, I'm sorry.
For $300,000, I'm just thinking that, you know, might get rid of something when you guys said yourselves three years ago, you spent, what, $300,000, $100,000, and with that complex?
3.5, 3.5 million.
3.5 million?
On the entire complex.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, one of the things that Chris said is that the water goes in at 55 degrees, so we have to, nobody wants to be cold for the most part. So we have to wait until it gets really sunny before we even have a reasonable temperature. And I would say, if we were going to do a cost analysis and we looked at pre-COVID, I am confident that we would have brought in probably less than half of what it costs to run that pool, right? Because, I mean, that would be if kids, if probably 20 kids went every day and spent the whole time there and stuff. That would be my best guess, I, I don't think that we'd come close to. Versus, I think that we've tried to be fiscally responsible and look at other programs and say, how much does it cost to run it, right? So if we're running in a deficit, does it make sense to continue to do it? Plus, we also, that equipment, I mean, it's rusted. There's no guarantee that when the pool is filled up to where it needs to be, that it's actually going to run after sitting for two and a half years, right? So we're kind of playing the odds game, but we have to move on, on the project regardless.
But a big one with option three, you wouldn't have to worry about that, right? Beyond the equipment.
True, but are we going to continue to fund something that's at a deficit, that it's at a loss?
Plus, I imagine option three probably does not include those pipes going up to that pool.
I believe it does.
Oh, it does, even those big, the big steel things, those-
That's what they, pool structure, all-new pumps, pool infrastructure, that's the network.
Pool infrastructure means pipes.
That could be a conservative number.
If there's one bird to go that route, I'd want, I'd want to know that before the ink dries. That's where I'm going with that, because, you know, I mean, I work with that kind of stuff quite a bit, and what you can't see is never better looking than what you get. Kind of like COVID for us, but I think it's also-
But you know, that was partly why we did that 3.5 million dollar project at the rec center, because of the ice machine, because of where all the pumps and things, we replaced them. So we're going to not replace everything, like you just said. But again, replacing all that isn't going to pay off for the end. You know, we're going to still be operating at a deficit.
Well, and I, I would just, I would hate to, I would hate to spend 1.8, 1.9 million dollars and go over there and see three people in the pool, and, and, you know, 100 people, 150 people at the splash park, right? It's like, well, shucks, maybe, you know what? Maybe we look at it as replace the old with the new, and if it's as awesome as we expect it to be, we have the opportunity to add on additional features, right? And we have additional space that five or 10 years down the road, we could expand if Olean grows and starts to boom like we, we hope it does. There is a footprint that we could expand. Well, at that point, the mayor would love to see a lazy river, we could expand with a lazy river.
And you got a river right there.
And it is pretty lazy, we could have a little stairs down to it, come up on itself and do-
Right, and go right over the wall and rain over it.
All right, so general consensus?
I, I think we should go with option zero, whatever the first one is.
Okay, the base option?
Yep, 1.3 million, yeah. For me, like, I like, I love the logic and thinking, thinking behind, like, let's go all the way, do this all right, you know what I mean, the 1.859, whatever, but we still, we're not going to be able to staff it. And it's like putting a brain mansion in an old, in an old van, in a bike, like, all of it, right?
I'm the 1.3 option.
Okay.
I'm not for Band-Aids, I'm definitely for the 1.3 option.
Okay, I, I too, I'm on board with 1.3. And this is not a conversation that, when I spoke to West Bloomfield, they, they had the same debate, okay, in Michigan. And they opted to eliminate, to completely demolish their old swimming pool, their municipal pool, to build the, the brand-new facility, which, which I brought to you guys. Which, you know, like I said, in their first year, generated 150,000 revenue, and we don't even need to be that, that level of, of competitive, all right? We need to get half that, and this thing will, will finance itself. So, yeah, I'm on board with that, too. Okay, anything else for this? Anything else for discussion here? All right.
Nah, no comments.
Taking it all in.
Okay.
Just hoping I make a mistake.
Okay, moving along then, so I will, the mayor and I will communicate back with, with Vortex and Clark Patterson Lee. We need to, you know, we still want to try to make that deadline next Memorial Day. We need to get moving, and I will be sending you guys all some preliminary concepts. I meant to bring that tonight. We can put it on the agenda for next time, I'm gonna forward you an email. But they're asking about color schemes, and so I wanted the council all to be able to kind of have a, you know, input on color schemes and layout and all, and all sorts of stuff there. So I'll be, depending on your likes.
Can I ask you a question? Is there going to be a formal vote next week on which way to go?
I mean, I don't know, do we want a formal vote? We've already set aside the money, what would the formal vote be?
Well, I mean, if I'm considering, I guess, I have veto rights, so if I'm considering, you know, taking on everything where everybody said, I'm listening to the people out there, and I'm not convinced that not keeping pools is not the right thing to do.
Okay.
So I, I just, I just, you know, until we, I guess I'd rather do something like that now than when the contract comes in, to accept the contracts, you know?
I mean, that's...
I think we can vote on that, I think you have votes to veto, no offense.
Well, would you, I I I'm more than happy to make a motion to, to move forward with the, the base, the base option, if that, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll have to talk to Jack and how that works. If it's not a resolution, do I have veto power on just a motion in committee?
Well, for, for the record, I will make a motion to move forward with base option as described. Could I get a second?
So second.
Second, and by Alderman Gonzalez, all in favor? I opposed.
I'm not on the committee, so...
You're not on the committee, sorry, Dave.
I'm not. I'm just agreeing, I'm not on the committee.
Look, talk to Jacob, maybe about it, Bill, I don't know. All right, thank you. All right, so, no committee reports, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second, and by Alderman Witt, all in favor? I opposed, motion carried, we adjourn.
Geez, John, first time I wanna spend money, you know against me.
I mean, you're rubbing off on me, Dave, I'm being fiscally responsible.
We are.
Fiscally responsible.
Okay, how about Ethan Rep? Okay, I'm just gonna finish up the last three wards. Let's see. Let me show all members are present. I'll approve, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April nineteenth meeting. Now, take a second?
Second.
Okay, on favor? Okay, on finished business, we have none, new referrals for consideration, it's just to review wards five, six, and seven. What I did is I handed out, this is from the chamber, and it's just a park, it's a map and it kind of points out the parks and places. The one that I gave you is bigger, obviously, and more detailed, but I thought you'd like that. The other thing I handed out was this enchanted mountain from the chamber. This is something that the Hany puts together, the tourism department, and what they do is they highlight different places in Cataragis County, and I marked each page that Ole Miss mentioned, and there's like fifteen pages, and they're just little things like restaurants, activities, canoeing, you know, things like that. So that's what's in this book, and I thought you might wanna look at it. The other thing, as we go through, for instance, Ward five. In Ward five, there's only one little park, it's at the end of Irving and State, Irving Street and North Eleventh Street. It's one, or I'm sorry, it's point-two acres. There's just, I think, a little swing set and one other little piece of equipment, that's it. The other thing in Ward five is the Y M C A, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's Ward six.
I'm like, what?
I know. I gave you credit for something.
All right.
But that was on the council, and Frank Baddeley, I'll put that part back.
Really? I know it's been there forever.
It's been there forever.
Yep. And I have to apologize, my printer didn't work, so I had to do this by hand. I know, you don't like handwriting, that's me. The other thing that's in Ward five is the Y, and I handed out their upcoming project that they're looking at doing. I just thought you might wanna look at that for more information, and I'm assuming at some point, just like in tandem, that the Y will probably come and make a presentation to us, because they do have to work with the city on that project. As far as the Y, it services youth and adults for a multitude of activities, it also has a daycare center. So they do a lot in Ole Miss. They also work in conjunction with J C C, for all of you that don't know that. And Ward five, there's always a way to connect to the trail, and right now, it's usually sidewalks, but they do connect to the Allegheny River Trail. Okay, Ward six, the park in Ward six is Marcus Park. It's three-point-five-nine acres. They have a softball field, restrooms, bleachers, concession stand, there's an old playground on the one side, it's very outdated. And as you know, we have been talking within tandem, and they'll get back to us with their plans. And Mayor, I do, are we gonna be playing softball there this year?
This year we are, yeah.
At least one more year?
Yeah.
Okay, just so everybody's aware of that. The other thing in Ward six is right across the street is Washington West. There's three different little playground areas behind Washington West, which is an elementary school. The North Fifteenth Street, West Court Apartments, they have a playground area and like a quarter basketball court. And then, of course, in Ward, in Ward six, there's connections to the Allegheny River Trail. They're on West Henley, West State, and of course, was it last year, we put the bike for, the air for the bike tires in the water, and everyone really appreciates that. It's also West, Washington Street, and it connects over on Constitution, which connects to our Allegheny River Trail. So those are just some of the things in Ward six. The other really exciting thing that's coming is the new entrance on North Twelfth Street, which is behind Country Fair, the U R A approved, doing a connecting trail. And it'll be nice, once it's done, it's gonna have the archway that's gonna say Allegheny River Trail. There's gonna be some shrubberies between the trail and the homes behind where this trail's going. So it's really gonna look nice.
And between, and between Country Fair and the homes?
Between the trail.
And and it'll come out to Buffalo Street, or I mean, Twelfth, Twelfth Street?
Thirteenth.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, it'll go out to Thirteenth Street?
Yeah, it's, if it's right, if you're...
I wish we had a map.
Yeah, Country Fair, okay?
Yeah.
Start walking down Twelfth Street.
Yeah.
From south, okay, just past their, their profit line.
Yeah.
There's a section there of the U R A homes.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be the new entrance there. That'll be the arch like is over here in Lincoln Arch.
Yeah, so it'll come, it'll come off of Twelfth Street?
Yes, so you go...
Oh, great.
Yeah, and then the whole thing there was, and I, this has bothered me for years, that, you know, we use the Allegheny River Trail, you gotta, you park in the parking lot, you gotta walk through the parking lot to get there.
Yeah, yeah.
So they have this piece of property that, that they're willing to, to make an investment in, to tie that into the Allegheny River Trail.
Awesome. That's great.
So it'll be a great connection, and then eventually, along that trail, it'll be connected down to Marcus Park. And I think Vern shows that that's gonna connect.
And not to, I'm sorry to interrupt, Linda, just to ask another question. Are we still talking about, was there, maybe we applied for a grant bill for West State or for Wayne Street for a shared-use path to try to connect to the River Trail?
Yeah, that was, that was Bob's vision.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would be a...
Where, where down Wayne? All the way down Wayne Street.
Yeah.
What do they call, what was the grants, we're, we haven't heard on that yet.
We haven't heard, I thought that was Walkable Four or Five or something.
Well, it's a, we is not the right word, that's one of the other grants, but there was a, a grant that he put in for, that we're still waiting to hear on.
Okay.
And that, but what it would do is put the shared-use path down Wayne Street, you'd, you'd still cross that twelfth where we have the, the walk, don't walk stuff is there.
Yeah.
And it would connect on over to the new hotel, and that would, and that, you know, heading the northern quarter out that way, so you could literally walk, you know, Wayne Street, connect on, you know, the whole, I think, from Warbets Park, go through J C C's property on that trail, cross Union Street, go down Whitney Street, you're on the school sidewalk, walk along the school, and then route, walk right down Wayne, you know, or ride your bike or that.
So we haven't heard from that one?
No, we haven't heard of that, yeah.
The other thing in Ward five and six is the addition of the bike lanes, you know, letting people know where the bike lanes are. And Washington Street, that was one part of the, the project. So there's a lot of connections that hopefully, like the mayor just said, we can build on. And then on to Ward seven, Boardman Park is three-point-five-nine acres, it's on North Union Extension, it's an older playground equipment, there's a basketball court, but it's, it's really, it's a large park, a lot of greenery, they planted, I think, I wrote it down, I think they planted five or six new trees in there. But it's a, a real pretty park. And one of the things, I think I talked to Mayor Elio and Bill, or and Dave about, is it would be a perfect place because it abuts the river and sixteen on one side to have in the back corner a nice dog park, because it would be away from the residential area. So it would be a great location.
That's been my vision for a while, I had one there, so, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about it. The other thing in Ward seven is St. John's after-school program. They have a lot of kids that attend. I know the basketball program in the winter months is really popular over there. They don't have any outdoor equipment though, like a playground or anything. Also in Ward seven is the polo fields, that is three-point-five, four-five acres. You access it from Elm Street, and there's a little, like, alleyway that you drive down to get it. It used to be softball fields, my kid's actually playing soccer there. There's a small playground near the water filtration plant, which is fairly new, so it's a nice little area. Another park in Ward seven is Homer Street Park. It's the newer one that they put the new equipment in, it's one-point-four-six acres. And that would be another location for a dog park. The only thing there is facing Wayne Street, the gates, they're up a little, so it's about a foot that a, a small dog could get out through, and there's a couple other places that might have to be repaired.
Can I, can I, quick comment, Linda? You know, another concern with that area, and I know that was like the major concern with Oak Hill Park, although Oak Hill Park has a tremendous amount of parking, there's really no parking by that park. I've taken my kids over there, there might be a couple spots to park by that, by the Homer Street, but it's on the, it's right on the street, so there's not a tremendous amount of parking.
There's a little driveway that goes in, but it's not for parking.
Correct.
It's like for turning around and for our crew to get in there.
Correct.
But that's Homer Street. High Saw is across from Soul Box, it used to be Franklin Street Park, it's three-point-fourteen acres. There's a softball field, there's a small playground in the back corner, and there used to be a par-three golf area that people used, and I remember Ed Jennings telling me that he still goes over there.
He knows somebody that golf, or where they get golf balls over there.
Yeah, it's on the back side. And the question I have, I don't think anyone uses it much for softball anymore, unless it's the kids for practice or something, because I know the softball team stopped because they were hitting people's houses, well, and the field was horrible, yeah.
If you're, if you recall back a few, a few years ago, J C C was using it for their softball, fastballs for softball.
Do they use it anymore?
No, but there's, they're trying to bring sports back.
Is that our park or is that the private?
It's a...
Actually, it belongs to Soul Box.
It belongs to Soul Box, who leases it to the city for, I think it was like a dollar a year.
Well, the, the question I had, I was over there walking around, and that, the top of the, the fence is all padded, so if it doesn't get used, could we use that padding in one of the other fields that doesn't have? It's the blue padding around the backside.
I'm not sure if J C C purchased that or us.
Okay.
So we'd have to check that.
I just thought I'd ask you that. Okay, and then last...
It's used, it's used in the summer months by little, the little girls, and they, they slide over there and practice.
Okay. Okay, and then last but not least is Gargoyle Park, which is forty-nine acres. It's off of West State Street, it's Gargoyle Road. And I noticed this weekend, they, they filled in a couple of the real and big patos with gravel, so it's a little better, but we're gonna have to do some work down there. And just so everyone's aware, the city owns Gargoyle, but it's in the town of Allegheny, so we pay taxes on it. We have a large pavilion, we have rentals, and I was looking through the sheet that Chris gave us about the rentals that have already been scheduled, and there's quite a bit of rentals going on in, in Gargoyle this year. There's a small playground, it's outdated, old equipment, but the kids this weekend were on it, and now it has a new addition of the twin-tier's eighteen-hole disc golf, which people are using. I was telling them at the Rec Center, there were about twelve teams when we were there this weekend, lots of cars, there are people bringing their dogs to walk on the trail, bringing their bikes to ride on the trail. And I was talking to a group of people that were ahead of us, and there were nine of them, and they were camping by Salamaki, which means probably State Park, but they're from Buffalo, and they brought it up on their app to see the closest disc golf, and they loved it, they thought it was challenging, and it was a really great place. The only other thing that I forgot to put on your sheet was the A K T Academy, the martial arts, which is in Ward seven, which has been there for many years.
Dave's a member.
Davis?
Davis, Ken's a member.
Kevin Thursday?
It's a black phone.
So, just to put in context, for our parks department, there's a hundred and forty-four acres of city-owned parks that they have to keep the, the grass cut, you know, take care of the equipment and all those things, excuse me, for our city parks. So I thought I would just update you on that.
Seems like we're in the park business.
We are.
Wow.
We're in the tourism.
I have a question, maybe this isn't a good time to, to ask, but the Gargoyle Park, forty-nine acres, is not in our city. How did that come about? Why are we paying a tax for a property that's in another town? Like, that makes absolutely no sense to me. And are we making enough in revenue to offset what we're paying in taxes there?
Okay, it was given to us.
It was, it was given to the city by...
Time is Gargoyle?
No.
Yeah, it was a oil company or something.
It was an oil company back in, back in the day, and it is designated as a park, and we basically have to, if we get rid of it, we have to, we have to replace that acreage out for another, for another park.
And legally, we actually looked into it legally to try to get out of it, and there's, it is so rock solid that, trust me, we looked into it. But, you know, I think now that the disc golf is there and we're starting to rent the facility, and we've, you know, we've kept it up, there's a couple other things we should do down there, but I think it's becoming more popular, and I was impressed with the people that were there Sunday.
The phone was knocked off, I can't, they...
Yeah, it was one of the oil companies.
They deeded it to the city, and it has to remain a park.
Well, it's good and bad, because if the more we bring to that park, they're essentially located to shopping centers, food, and hotel. What reason do they have to drive three miles up the road to Little Ole?
We've got the Beefeater Barrel, we have Bistro, we have Angie's, they find well.
Maybe we need to be creative with our marketing down there then.
Thank you.
Right, so, right, so if we have signs up there, right, that we have, that the Angie's had a sign, right? So that would be my thought, because if I saw a sign...
We put it out, park.
I would, I would...
We need to, we need to invest some money in, in the providing down there.
Yes.
Yeah. And it does, it has gas, so you can cook, it has electric, it has bathrooms. The one thing that folks would like, the bathrooms to be open more, but I think there's a lot we could do down there. And people, you know, they go, the Bonnet students come through, and now that there's a...
Where, where, Gargoyle?
Gargoyle. There's a new, an additional entrance from...
My students, my students go down there.
Where the students come through, so they don't have to go way up by the tennis court and move around. Yeah, they come, there were students playing disc golf, so they do utilize it, they like it. And one of the things that Rich Longner has been doing is putting collegiate teams And one of the things that Rich Longner has been doing is putting collegiate teams together. He has Holton, Alfred, uh, he was working on St. Bonaventure and a couple others. Um, two weekends ago, they had a tournament in Holton College. The other thing is they're putting a new disc golf and brachery. Um, so they're just, if you put it, an app in, they just pop up all over West Ole River.
And we can get Bonnet's, right, with us, that should be something you watch.
Take care of that.
Rename it and make it take part.
Sounds good to me. Okay, now the other part of.
Yeah, one quick question. Um, so, see, I mean, seeing how much Gargoyle is starting to get utilized and again, I mean, somebody with small kids, like I won't let my kids play on that playground equipment unless they have a tetanus shot.
In the hurricane? It is, it's old.
And I, and I, I'm not trying to rob from Peter to pay Paul or anything like that. I mean, I know playground equipment is expensive and maybe you guys, you guys mull it over. I don't want to create a, uh, an uproar on Dave's ward, but, but I think that playground equipment in Ward seven on Homer Street is all brand new and I never, never see anyone using that playground equipment.
I don't think once.
I think.
But in the summer, I guess, uh, but if you put that, if you put me down Gargoyle, it's gonna be vandalized in a week.
That's, so that's why we gotta, we gotta fear vandalism, like, so, so, all right, so kids, go, go play and get a sliver and get lockjaw. Uh, I mean, you know, if families are going down to Gargoyle and playing, playing disc golf and we want to activate that, we want the pavilion to get utilized, then we gotta put in facilities for kids too. And, and I would just, again, rather than just see nice equipment sit there not used, I'd rather see it used. So I'd be in favor of moving that stuff to Gargoyle.
We have to take a look at that because that, that was, that park was put in because, uh, there was a park where, uh, Mike John.
Right.
Put his facility. And that was, uh, to replace what was there. So, but it, I don't, I mean, we have the land, doesn't, I don't know.
I'm not saying we not make it park.
Yeah, no, I, and that's what I'm skidding at, and I don't think it says we have to have equipment there. But, uh, that was a, a compromise with the residents of North Ole.
Most of the residents of North Olean.
Well, and keep in mind, they have four parks.
Have little kids.
Yeah, but the other thing.
Usually a verified restaurant.
Just saying.
But I have to tell you, um, the kids that were there were on the merry-go-round and a little kiddo was being pushed on a swing set. The only thing is, um, there was an old metal, I, I think I sent you the, the picture, frame of an old picnic table that needs to be put out because two little kiddles were climbing on that and they could have gotten hurt, so.
Did that picnic table still have that split right in half that's been vandalized that was on there a week ago?
There's a metal one and then there's another one that shouldn't be there.
I mean, we pay taxes down there, so police should be patrolled, I believe, Allegheny.
No, 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 they all get them.
Allegheny Police should be patrolled.
Ah, that's a good point.
They should.
So theoretically then, that can't be in Ward seven if it's in Allegheny.
No, it's not.
Oh, no, no, it's not.
Okay, that's why I put it on there. Okay, gotcha.
That's why I put that line there.
We shifted gears away.
Well, I figured that.
I took you further now, West State Street.
I figured, but I was like, I don't know how that's connected.
No, no. So, um, the only other part of Youth and Rec is, um, the Youth Bureau, which is made up of members. And basically it's just, um, usually three or four students that, um, and they're appointed by the mayor. And they just basically, um, oversee what goes on in the, the community. There's a whole, um, a write-up on our webpage that talks about the mission statement and what they do. But it's just to keep us, you know, uh, what do I want to say, like family unity, good citizenship, um, quality programs and activities. That's what the Youth Bureau does. There's also the Youth Court.
Court, yeah.
Do you, I, it used to be Paula, do you know who's running it now?
Paula.
Oh, she's still there?
Yeah.
Okay. And what they do is they look at, they try to look at kids, like especially, um, you know, not showing up for school, things that they, it's like peer, um, you know, kid to kid kind of. I don't want to say justice, what I want to say, kind of a program to help. Yeah, sort of that.
Big brovitzes.
Yeah, and then I, Youth Officer, um, Jason Laskin, he's also involved with all of that. So that's the other part of the Youth and Rec. So.
Youth, if I may, Youth Court was an alternative to going for a child via petition to family court. So they could go there, uh, be, you know, get a regular appearance ticket to Youth Court and then they would be, uh, judged by their peers. And, uh, they, they could come out of there with, uh, community service. Uh, they may have they, uh, they may have to write an essay, uh, an apology to someone if they, say they stole from a, let's say, they shoplifted from a store, they may have to write a, an apology to the store, apology, you know, to their, to their parents and things like that. So it's, it's an alternative to a child via petition to the family court.
And some of them, um, they would have to use so many hours of community service, you know, picking up garbage and things like that.
So since we're on parks, I know we've not done four, but, um, Mayor Elio, we have gotten the, um, just the letter about, uh, Oak Hill Park and the side on Fourth Street. So I just wanted to, because if we're gonna invest, this is where we're gonna invest, you know, a, a good amount of money. And I don't believe that that park facing Fourth Street is, was included, right? That's not. And I did drive by and I did look at it and honestly, the, uh, Putnam, I think it is, that looks pretty rough too, to be quite honest. Um, so I, you know, as we're talking about the parks and, and investing, I mean, Fourth Street, a lot of people drive by there and it really looks bad.
Like, what, do you, what's the solution to that?
So, I mean, so I did go and read and I looked.
Cause it's, it's a steep slope, right, so.
Yeah, so I sent out some ideas, I mean, because there's some shrubbery you could get and then you could put, um, rocks in there, right? So dug in so that you didn't have to. My thing is we should, whatever we do, we should do something that doesn't have a lot, doesn't take a lot of maintenance, right? Not a lot of care, something that's gonna grow and kind of thrive. Um, because I do see where we tried to mulch is just gonna fall down.
Right.
I mean, so we could either tier it, right, and put something in there. Or there's different mosses and different shrubbery that we could put there that would fill in the spaces. And then we could just plot some nice rocks in there or something and, and it would be like next to nothing. And I do think Putnam needs it too, but it looks, and it's not just on the left side of the stairs, it's on the right side of the stairs too. Once you get past that little bit of flowers, it looks really bad.
I've got a great idea.
Put the pool there?
What they could do is gear this thing calls on West Forest Avenue, tear up that brick street and put those bricks over there. That's part of the community's history and that side there.
And we could brick it.
Just brick the whole side.
Well, when you're, you're, you're looking, if you're looking at the stairs, okay, and the right side, uh, that, uh, that we have, uh, uh, the high school kids come in there and they will, uh, clean that up and it is planted. And there is money in the foundation, only a community foundation, uh, for beautification on, on that side. And then a little bit on the, the left side.
Where kind of the flowers are.
Yeah, but not farther down where, where we're getting to complain on it.
You're gonna think I played for those black bags or whatever it was under there.
Well, it's, it's to meant to keep the, the weeds.
Yeah, that keeps the weeds out. But, uh, you know, maybe it'd be worth our while to have a landscaper give us a, an idea.
I agree.
See what it would cost and maybe have a landscaper do it and then we got it done. And, uh, and, you know, and like you say, with something that's not gonna be a lot of maintenance.
No, I, I, I agree. Whether it's, uh, like you said, um, some sort of moss or even ivy, I mean, I don't know, so, something that just spreads.
That just grow for themselves.
You gotta go pick up, but the one you mentioned in the email, I can't think of the name of it, the green.
The moss, yeah.
We had it at our house up Rock City. It covers complete, it soaks up water pretty good, it thrives, it never dies, it stays green, it stays well yea high and it just spreads out and stays right there, perfect. Put mulch in there, mulch attracts, uh, carpenter ants.
And lots of, of seeds.
Well, and if we intersperse big rocks with it, it would look really attractive, I think, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. But I, I would hope that we keep in mind Gargoyle because there are families going down there and those, that playground equipment doesn't need fixed.
So you think we should pull it out of Homer Street then?
No, I think we should make another cap for project.
Just trying to be financially responsible, Dave.
Yeah, we gotta, yeah. We recycle here. Okay, so any other questions? Uh, but it's, when you look through this book, it's interesting what's in here. And you can tell the folks that sponsor different ads like Alleka Vale, the Seneca stations, um, a lot of canoeing, Allegheny State Park. So it's really a, an interesting book and this is from two thousand twenty, so they're gonna be updating.
Anybody done the Pat McGee Trail, do you ever bike that?
I, I just ride. I don't even know, man, I, I go, so, no, I mean, I, I bicycle too, but I, I just ride wherever. I don't even catch any signs and go on so fast.
You mean up by Little Valley?
Have you done it?
No, I didn't even know it existed at that point.
No, I drive by it each week and I always think of Pat.
It's like, oh, I love Pat. Well, there is a.
That's the old railroad line, right?
Yeah.
It's undated, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, isn't it mostly snowmobile?
No, 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 you can go, I mean, you, you can, uh, actually if you, uh, you get on, um, what is it, uh, you leave, if you come to, you leave Salamaka heading to Little Valley, you know, the, from, if you come around by the casino, you go that way. There's a, it's right there before, there was an old railroad line. You can actually, that'll take you all the way from there. You can go all the way down past Little Valley and even go further. It's the old railroad line.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, that, uh, they were trying to get, at one point when I was on the legislature, they were trying to get the county to take it over. Cause the, the committee was, uh, keep maintenance on it was, was, uh, was rough.
Right, well, at the same time, they were trying to hook in Kingsdale, their path.
Well, that's still, that's still coming.
Okay.
Okay, that, they just, uh, they just got, they just got a grant, uh, to study that, to bring, uh, and that would be the Genesee Valley, uh, you know, Genesee Canal, uh, which is actually, actually goes through Holton there now into Cuba. And they wanna come out of there and come.
Why can't we get them to come down here?
We are, well, it'll, it'll, it'll touch Olean, so.
Little Valley.
Yeah, it'll, it'll touch Olean and head towards, uh, the state park.
And what is that now?
That's the Genesee, I don't know if you'll see it on there, cause it's, uh, it's in the, it's in the, uh, right now it's in the study stage.
Oh.
Jeff Goodyear.
Is there like a national trail?
Yeah, I think they wanna make it, you know, you could actually.
Isn't there a national trail?
You could come out of, uh, you could come out of, uh, Rochester and come down here and da, 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 da.
On the big map that's in the center of your book, the orange trail that's right by Kingsdale. On here it has it marked as a snowmobile trail.
Yeah, yeah.
But it goes right through and it goes all over the place.
But where you go?
Jeff Goodyear, the, uh, town supervisor of, uh, Hishaway, uh, he's, he's involved in that. We've had, uh, I hosted before COVID, I hosted several meetings here, uh, with the, you know, on this. And, uh, and then COVID hit and things got, I think they're bringing it back up now.
Yeah, I was just curious what we're going on.
The county just got a, uh, got a grant from Ralph Wilson to, uh, study that, so.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in our little corner of the world. So, um, any other comments? If not, I'll take a motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And then the last is finance, um, like the record show, and ready, Mr. President? Um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April nineteenth, if you have a second. Second by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor? Unfinished business, um, that would be our capital projects, which we're gonna discuss tonight. So, is it Glenn's or?
Yeah.
The mayor that are gonna watch?
I was gonna say, was this mood lighting?
It was.
I kind of liked it.
So, okay, Lance, what do we have? The, uh, let's look at the south wall. Is that at the, uh, water filtration plant?
Hold on, I gotta get my compass out and figure out which, which wall it is.
Yeah, we just got, we just got notified that we did not get the grant, the, uh, the grant for that. We were turned down again. Brad Camp is analyzing that, is gonna contact them, find out why. Uh, so we have, still have Buffalo Street Underpass, uh, that needs to be done. Uh, I think, are we short ninety thousand for that?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five? Okay. And then the valves.
Phone house, man?
Huh?
Is that the phone house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh, the reservoir valves and, and inspection. I can't, a hundred and thirty-six K is that what you have there?
Yeah, that's just body valves. Now this inspection is not included.
Oh, yeah, that's the big power decide something on the valve so we can get that done.
That was another set of valves that we talked about.
Oh, different.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. These were, these are the big power belts, right?
Yeah, this is for the.
So you can switch them?
Yep, remember these are the ones that they explain were actually in the ground. And they, uh, so they can, uh, uh, drain one reservoir and keep, you know, going and, uh, so they can do maintenance. And then, you know, these, uh, these will be above ground so that they can work on them. Uh, right now they gotta, they gotta, if I'm, if I'm correct, they gotta dig these up to get to them. I think that's what Brad explained at that time, so, um, siphon project. We're still looking at the cost for that, so, go ahead, Lance, you can.
A lot of these things we still don't have costs on. We haven't heard anything on the levy?
The levy is gonna be ongoing. Uh, Brad Camp and fire chief are meeting with them this, uh, this Thursday. Uh, we'll have an idea, uh, maybe we send out the RFP for the, uh, some firms to give us advice on that.
Yeah.
So that, no, we don't have a cost on that yet, that hasn't come in yet.
Right.
So, yeah, we, uh. So we got a lot of, we still got a lot of things going on there, but I, I don't know if we're really ready right now to say, okay, let's fund this or this or this.
Makes that easy a little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's sort of like that wall of the filtration plant, that's gone, where it just has to be done, right?
That's what we're on for anyways.
Mm-hmm.
But it, I mean, Brad said something's getting worse down there, right? There's an issue. Is it, is it progressing into a bigger problem or?
Well, it could, yeah, so, I mean, yeah, we, we gotta do it. We gotta get, do something there. We were hoping to get this, this, uh, funding, so, uh, but.
Is there any other opportunities? I just saw that they, what they just, what they just poked something, a bunch of, a bunch of new.
Bunch of new, yeah.
Grants.
So I'm going to, I, I leave for NICOM tomorrow and let me see what they.
Aren't you the treasurer?
Yeah.
Pull some strings. Pull some strings, come on.
They want to give me the checkbook, so. But there's a lot, there's a, there's supposedly a lot, a lot of money coming out with, you know, from the state and all that. So I think we can try to get more information on that and see what, uh, what projects here we could possibly get funded.
So Mayor, I have a question. So the south, south wall, I mean, I've heard about it over the years numerous times, I haven't paid any mind, but, no, I'm on the council. So worst case scenario, it, it's cracked or something, right?
Yeah, it's polluted.
If, if someone was to happen there, God forbid, this week, what, what are we looking at happening?
Uh, possibility of, uh, you know, some real major, uh, damage and repair.
Who's shut down? What part of the city would be shut down?
I'm not sure, it'd be the entire city or we would be limited on, on what, on producing what. I can get a better answer for you on that, yes.
Just to try, remember, Mayor, right, uh, this was repaired once, but the care is not holding up, right? It was, okay. It was badly repaired and it wasn't on insurance or whatever it was.
This is, yeah, this goes back, uh, I don't know how, how many, uh, you know, how long it goes back. But my understanding was when it was originally poured, that the rebar was not hooked together. It was, so as the pressure, the wall started pulling away, we did some repair work to it, I believe, eight years ago or somewhere in that area there. And now it's just, we've been trying to, uh, get it, uh, get money to, to do a complete repair on it.
Bill, was this also the, the wall where the, the concrete sat in the truck for like two days or something like that?
Yeah, I think there was, yeah. And then the, uh, the company that originally put it in went out of business and the, what the other, the, the, uh, the, uh, that was a subcontractor. The general contractor did some, tried to make it, uh, right as best they could and, uh, it's just, it's a complete mess.
Concrete is very finicky, if you don't pour it.
Right.
Like, within a certain timeframe, yeah, the right type of draw, that stuff, I couldn't, it's just never gonna cure.
But the main thing was they didn't, the rebar wasn't, wasn't hooked.
So Mayor, we have two county legislators that live in this city, right?
Three.
Three?
Three, yeah.
So if, if we lost water to the south wall, I, I know at least one of the three or two of the three would be affected. So would you think that the county would help the city in obtaining funding? And obtaining funding for a wall that if it broke right now, the, the, their biggest city in the county would be?
Yeah, let me, let me confirm what, what actually would be, uh, the, I guess, the fallout if the wall fails, and then, yes, that's, I mean, yeah, we can go to the county.
Cause I do remember a disaster assessment, I started reading it, then it kind of, but the, that has to be in there.
Yeah, the, where the, the walls cracked, that pond area, we emptied out, so there's no water in there, but there's other pools, you should go down and take a tour, they'll show you exactly where it's standing.
Yeah, that's, maybe that's what we need to do, is, is on, on a committee tonight, have, go, or just arrange a tour somewhere, I can see what's going on.
Have a work set. Yeah, do it like we did tonight at six.
Let the water filter.
We should do that next, right Paul? Thanks, moving guys.
I, I, I think we've already seen it.
He's already seen it.
Yep, already seen it. Um, well, as far as these other things go, I mean, I don't know, are they mission critical? The other two, at least, the Buffalo Street Underpass, I mean, it hasn't failed yet, right?
We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't want that to.
Wow. Planning.
Does it, does Buffalo look worse than the pool ups? Cause that's where my brain is.
We need a tour of the, I think we need a tour of, I think we need a tour of Buffalo Street Underpass.
Oh, they said it was really bad, we need to go down under.
That's, uh.
I guess.
That's confined space.
Yeah, they'll say that's confined space, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna act like.
I mean, I, uh, you know, I mean, where my brain's going is, one of those three things seems critical, and the other two maybe push off a year, but.
Which one's that, I'm sorry?
Like if, that wall one seems like it's a, kind of an impending doing, for some reason, but the other two, the reservoir valves, the Buffalo Street, something like, yeah, they need to be done, but we could pass the year on that again, if we commit to, you know, we commit to the wall, and, and we let the other two ride.
Aren't there people that can s- look at that wall, like, experts in concrete and structural engineering, that can look at that and say, it's gonna fail in this kind of timeline, like this kind of?
We've had some.
I think we've had all the time.
Like, it's not on the in-vil hanging overhead, it could just go at any time, like.
No, no. If, if you go down and look at it, it kind of goes like this, and like I said, that pond is empty, you have to go in inside and look at it, but then right beside it, the crack is going this way, so that, that's what the urgency is.
But we're, we're, we're talking about it like it's like a, a fault line, and there could be an earthquake at any time, like, I don't think that's how that.
Yeah. But that's where you need to go look at it, because we don't understand.
Well, that's why I was wondering, because we've heard about this, I, I know I've heard about that wall numerous times, three years, so it's like, what is going on with this wall?
Yeah. Right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When I came on the council in two thousand and one, that's, that was Mayor Griffin, they had done it, and from that day on, all I've heard about is this crack in the wall, and it was because of.
And since joining six years ago, I, I've heard about the wall.
It's the abyss, I mean, it's just.
Well, joining in June.
Like, we're one wall.
We're a pool where we have to wait for someone to drive.
Well, that's just it, right, we don't wanna waste.
Right, we don't have a plan to fail.
You're, uh, I know we're getting, we're getting on to.
I know, move on.
But, uh, you know, I think, uh, the, uh, Levi, or the levy accreditation, and then I think Levi, I don't know, but levy accreditation, uh, that is, uh, that is a very unknown, and it may be very costly, okay? Uh, because the, the, uh, uh, what, what will happen there is if we, if our levy is not accredited again, then that can affect a lot of people's insurance, uh, you know, homeowner's insurance, so.
That sounds like county, that's a major county matter there, yeah.
Yeah, so. So, uh, then we, we got the, uh, the city garage, uh, that, that's, uh, you know, something we have to consider.
And we have no, that's an unknown.
Yeah, well, we had, you know, we've had guestimates of, uh, you know, the, uh, of, uh, I think what turned us all off a few years ago was, it was like a ten to twelve million dollar, uh, guest, estimate on that, but that could be, that's right around, I think the latest one would be, uh, about, uh, seven or eight, seven or eight, twelve, ten, twelve million.
Which one's that?
The city garage, I don't know if you remember when they were talking about that before.
City garage.
Yeah.
You know, the thing connected with the city garage is, do we have funding, or are we talking about funding where we put the pad in on Front Street for the, to cover, to put salt in there?
Yes.
Has that been discussed at all, so much?
We discussed that several times, and, uh, we had thirty-nine thousand dollars left over.
That's the salt shed, there.
Yeah, we had thirty-nine thousand dollars, uh, that was not, uh, in salt, so we were taking that, and that, that's gonna have to cover, that's being, uh, that's, uh, that'd be taken care of, so, so we're not, but, yeah, the city garage is, is the unknown, if you're looking at, uh, probably, uh, you know, seven, eight million for a new city garage. The ball field fencing, that, that can be, that's put off, or we are, we're doing a, putting together a, a renovation of Fornice Park, which will be coming to you, uh, with that, and we'll be, uh, seeking money from not only the county, but, uh, uh, the, uh, Empire State Development, and, uh, uh, Ralph Wilson funds, so. And, uh, the city vehicles, uh, I talked to John the other day, and we are gonna revisit, uh, we'd like to revisit with, uh, Enterprise, so we're setting up a meeting now, and I'd, uh, you know, to, uh, to talk to them about that, so. So, any, any of the property reevaluation, um, you know, that's, uh, something we should do, we're not saying we have to do it this year, but we should do that in, uh, in the near future.
I always forget, what's the benefit of that?
It'll, uh, go through and make the.
Make my taxes go up?
Probably, yeah, it'll equalize.
Equalize people lives.
Equalize the taxes throughout the.
Right.
So if you take care of your property, it'll go up, so when.
When Greg, when I asked him at the meeting, when he did the budget, he said it didn't affect costs, but.
Yeah, he said a third, a third, a third. No, he didn't, he said a third, a third, a third.
I looked at my tax bill when it came yesterday, and I only pay tax on the number that doesn't include the increase, you know, that is not reflected in that number.
Right.
So, granted, but it means everybody's taxes are going up if we do it.
It's a third, a third.
He said, it's a third, a third, a third, and in the way that I can only understand it is, a third is gonna go up, a third will go down, and a third will stay the same. So if I had to be a guessing person, if you take care of your properties.
Right, okay. Right.
Your taxes are probably gonna go up, your assessment's gonna go up, right, uh, a third.
Yeah.
If you have, if you have a red X on your house, then your.
That was also.
So I didn't, I didn't sleep on it, I thought everybody's were going up, but.
Remember, we're also at eighty-five percent.
What does that mean, Bill?
You know, I, 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 basically with, uh, with, uh.
Means homes are selling at fifteen percent more than they were assessed at.
Cause. Because some communities, I've seen some communities, and it's like.
I know, I gotta, I gotta admit, I don't understand it fully either, but.
Everyone you ask is a little different.
I know, when, uh, when, uh, when I was on the county, that, uh, the city was at ninety percent or so, I know the county tax was higher for the city than it was for anyone who was at a hundred percent.
Oh.
Okay, so, I mean, we can get Greg to explain that out to us again.
And that's why Mayor Creucci did that assessment, to put us at a hundred percent.
Yeah, cause I, when Greg told us that, I assumed that because everybody wants every penny they can get, that, that number adjusts so that we're paying based on market assumption, right, without someone going out and looking at your house, but, the tax bill only has what, the actual assessed number, that's the only thing I'm actually built for.
Right.
Correct, right.
And I think he, I think Greg also said that, uh, that we're, we're, uh, that would equalize our commercials also.
Now, that, he, that I, I understand, right, that he said that there's commercial, there's a lot of commercial property that is under, under assessed in, in the community, and that could be possibly because we keep giving breaks, uh, every time I see, uh, the, the mall, all these big businesses around town, their assessments keep coming down.
Yeah.
So why can't we do a commercial property reevaluation?
Yeah, that's what, he said we can't do that.
No.
By, under the state, you've gotta do the entire community, that's what I.
Yeah, it would be unfair, you just try to get one percent.
Hey, Lenz, how, how much money is in the water pump, like, the surplus in the water pump?
So Kenny was like at one forty-eight, nine oh nine.
What's the total though, fifty, five hundred sixty-five?
Yeah.
Yes.
Plus one forty-eight? Yes, fund balance is seven fourteen.
No.
Yep, up high.
Oh.
Fund balance.
Budget, fifteen percent allowable spending.
And the sewer fund balance is two point one billion?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
But remember, we, we've been building that up so we can continue to do our, 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 uh, two hundred and fifty thousand a year fixing sewer lines, and I might have consent order.
Right, 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 okay. Just wondering. And if we wanted to pay for some of the south wall projects with fund, fund balance, it would have to have to only come from the water, right, we could justify spending some of the sewer money on that.
I believe so, yeah, right, yeah.
And if we borrowed, the payment would come out of there. That's simple.
And the same with the re- uh, reservoir, reservoir valves, that would have to come out of, from water?
Mm-hmm. Out of water, yeah.
What did we say that was, a hundred and thirty thousand?
Hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Then put it, say, just for the valves.
Yeah, just for the valves.
So the inspection was a separate cost?
Yeah.
I don't think it's too much.
Cause you think so?
I just guess, I don't know what that type of thing is, probably contract.
Who's the D E C doing?
It's probably much smaller, I don't know, we're coming down, trying to get Richard to.
Okay, well, I mean, if we wanted to get some movement, I mean, there's a hundred and thirty-six left in ARPA. In the second round of ARPA, that would take care of the reservoir valves, and pull the ninety-five Buffalo Street Underpass, now, wait a minute, is that sewer?
Uh.
What, what would that be considered, the underpass?
The underpass?
That'd be sewer.
So.
So we, we could pull that out of sewer.
Could take over sewer.
And could that count towards our annual contribution to repairs or whatever, in the consent order?
Yeah, I don't know, possibly.
You know what I mean, now we just, now we have to do a hundred and ten thousand or whatever? Right, right, that might be the way to go, if we could.
Yeah. Okay.
Who's got a remark on that, Jack? Who's got a comment on that?
Let's talk to Brad, and then, yeah, then Jack, so.
So just so we have some, some movement here tonight, I guess, right, do we wanna just earmark the hundred and thirty-six balance of ARPA for that reservoir valves and the ninety-five, uh, maybe pull out of sewer fund balance, and see if that can count, like Paul said, towards the two fifty? Does that sound reasonable? Even if it can't, we should still just do it that way. I, I agree, I mean, let's just do it.
Yeah.
I still want a tour of the facility here.
But I still think everybody should go.
The valves, uh, that.
We'll, we'll do that, we'll get that on the agenda.
ARPA, and then the, uh, uh, the, uh, underpass, uh, take out of the sewer fund, uh, reserves, right?
Yeah.
But, Lenz, what do we have left in the contingency for sewer for this year?
Thirty-two.
Contingency for sewer.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Okay, so we could do, we could, uh, take the, what's left in the contingency, and then the remainder, take out of the fund balance.
Yeah, cause it's gonna roll, I mean, it's gonna roll the fund balance anyways.
It's gonna roll the fund balance, yeah, so we can take it out of the fund.
Six, one, half dozen of them.
Right, okay.
So we're doing contingency then fund?
Keep it at fund balance, that's gonna roll into the, yeah, it's gonna roll into the fund balance anyways.
Okay.
Way we keep the, keep it simple.
And then that, uh, ARPA funding, that'll be the end of that, if we put it towards the reservoir.
That's, that should be the end of that.
There is another one, no, that is all.
No, that'd be the end of that, that's the second, uh, uh, round that we'll be getting, yeah.
Yeah.
Kinda torn on that, but.
So it does say up there, reservoir valves and inspection, I thought the question was whether or not the inspection, because if we put a hundred and thirty-six thousand, and then that doesn't include our inspection, like.
I, I thought, I don't think there was a.
No, that, that's, uh, that's to do the, that's to do the valves so that we can better do our, the inspections on the, drain one tank, be able to do the inspections, and still have, uh, still have water, you know, still have the pressure, and then, uh, and then we'll be able to, so we'll be able to go back and forth, uh, to allow us to continue to do the inspections of that. Uh, remember, that, they, that was put in, uh, they have been inspected since the reservoir's been put in, and that, that's been twenty years, isn't that?
That's exactly what our.
Probably.
Probably before that.
Yeah.
That'll be next.
Mayor, is there any other place in the city that we would need updating or upgrades that would qualify for ARPA?
Uh, yeah, that probably is.
Gargoyle Playground.
Uh, playground, remember, uh, yeah, that's.
Even a small one.
That, to, uh, recreation, you know, your parks and that is one of the places, so, so we could, yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't we just take the nine thousand dollars remaining in the first ARPA funds and buy some playground equipment for Gargoyle?
And it doesn't have to be a lot, like the.
Nine thousand bucks would get you, just a.
Nine dollars, yeah, it would get you a nice set.
It would get you a nice set.
But, uh.
If you have a three times amount, I know, right?
But not for the park, listen, we should invest at least as much in our kids as we are in the dog parks.
But, um, the merry-go-round still works, the kids are around, they love it.
Yeah, when you're in miles, splash that.
Yeah, one and a half million.
Okay.
No, I do think that the argument is, is great though, because when people go down there, if you're, if you're doing disc and you have kids, you want them to do something to occupy, I mean, so I think that.
Well, it's, it's a good hour walk to go through, and it's up and down, so it's.
I mean, Bill, don't you think that ten thousand bucks, we could get something?
That's, I'm, I'm sure we can, yeah.
I, I don't think we should put, you, you guys wanna put playground equipment at Gargoyle?
Just a couple little pieces, like the merry-go-round, I think's fine, but just add some, something else there, because there were kids all over the place, just throwing balls, playing on the merry-go-round, take out that one piece.
I'm not gonna argue against that, I don't, wouldn't be my first choice, but I'm not, not the hell of a guy to die under, so.
Well, but maybe I get something that's a little less.
How, how much is that, how, how much is that playground you put in at Yama, the park, you put in?
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand, how much is it utilized?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't think. We could, maybe we. Pull that out of there? We could pull that. Can we put coal in there?
Pull, pull me the splash pad.
But there's other activities down there, like, we used to have our domestic violence walk and different things down there, right?
We have five kids.
That, right, that we would have big events down at Gargoyle, and, and the kids always use the equipment.
Yeah, it, it, it is utilized a lot, uh, we, we, we frequent, that, that's where we stop with our kids on our bike, when we go for a bike ride on the trail, they all need a break, so we stop there, they dink around on the playground equipment.
It's, 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 it's.
Yeah.
It'd be a good investment.
Yeah, it would be.
Put some equipment down.
And I think you'd see more people running it for reunions if you had something else to do.
I agree.
We, uh, but we, we do need to put some money into that, to large everybody in there, too.
Yeah.
We do need to do something there, so.
We painted it a couple years ago.
That's right.
We could have paid for it, oh, we did.
We did.
We did, see, I'd organize that with, uh, by response.
I was, I got all kinds of pictures.
That was nice of them. Now we need to come, have them come back and do the inside. Chris Stanley.
He wasn't there.
He wasn't, he didn't show.
At all, it was.
Jim Har and his team.
Cause at the time Gerald wasn't there.
I mean, there was a, we had, uh, twenty, thirty kids, there was a lot of kids. I, you know what, I think Jim offered extra credit for his classes, it's taking down.
That's okay, there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, Greg.
They did some woodwork, too, they fixed a few, they did a lot of that there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I had a paper rush for you, I showed up, I was busy that day.
Had your name on it?
Can we, uh?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, enter executive session.
Wait, 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 Lenz has something more, yeah, bands.
Oh, no, he hasn't, oh.
Oh, we don't have a band yet.
The bands, remember?
Yes.
The old hill bar and disco bar.
Yes.
Sorry.
So, are you, okay, you fred by proxy now, is that what this is? Wait, wait, were you gonna present something, or are you gonna?
I was. I was told to put it on the agenda, that's, that's.
I don't see it on the agenda.
Well, no, I was told Monday, it's a, I thought, I was told, you know, sorry.
Did I, I saw the discussion, I wasn't active in the discussion, was I? Does it need to be on for the agenda tonight, or does it still need to be for Tuesday?
We want.
We have two, we have two, slip one down on next Tuesday, so we have to discuss this today, so we could go to the next.
Get the.
We could put it on for, uh, committee will hold it before next Tuesdays to discuss it. We could put it on for, committee will hold it before next Tuesdays, discuss it, and then.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
And we'll be, because it wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda, so we could do that next Tuesday.
So could you at least, so we're all aware, could you give us an email in, in, I, 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 some of those emails got a little too complicated, so could you put together a simplified email to all of us to, to know what to expect, yes, we have to re-ban?
We'll have, uh, minuscule solutions?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have them put it in.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Good.
Perfect.
Okay, um, committee reports, we have none, I'm not going to adjourn, and then I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
Make that motion?
I'll second.
That's for.
Um, pay.
Pending litigation, yes?
No, sale of property.
Oh, sale of property. Selling Gargoyle Park. Hi.
Or don't.
Did you, did you take a vote?
No.